At the end of the day, it was 10:30. It was like, oh, I saw a game, or any song, Tony, just to say, "Oh, fuck it." Oh, shit.
Well, they're best if you have bodies to play on.
Well, yes. And you know what stood out to me as well was, well, I had my phone in my hand, and I was checking, I was just jazzed. Yeah, I got that one, that long. It was, it was super long, and it was, it was separation. You know, it was the longer one.
Sure. Exactly.
And as I tell you all, we had 44 and a half foot spread on the game. And I'm sitting there like, and then we were at 45 and a half at the end of it.
I was like, I'll leave you with a couple of countries that aren't like that.
You're 42.
You did 42.
All right, that's awesome. At least you got your third screen, man.
Thank you. Goodbye, everyone. I understand. Yeah. Nine, nine.
I've got six, five.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Milton City Hall. We're glad you're here.
Hold on, this makes really long.
Right. All right, before we get started, I'd like to ask Reverend Jerry Dockery to lead us in invocation. He's from Crab Apple First Baptist Church.
Good evening. Let's pray. Lord, we pause to give you thanks today for all your many blessings and the opportunities of life, for the rain that you sent our way. We know that you always know what's best. And Lord, as we convene here tonight to carry out business that affects our community, one in which we're very grateful to be a part of, we pray for your wisdom and your direction to be upon our leadership, and that you would give us all, Lord, wisdom to see how you're leading and guiding and directing and providing for our community. We continue to be mindful of those who serve us by standing in harm's way and serving us in that way. We just commit them to your care as well as their families, and ask again that you guide us during this time together, that you might be glorified, for it's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. So I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, October 7th, 2019, to order. The city strongly recommends that you review tonight's agenda carefully, and if you wish to speak on any item on the agenda, please bring your comment cards to the clerk as soon as possible. While the Milton rules allow for a speaker to turn in their comment card up to the time that the clerk calls the agenda item, once the agenda item is called, no more comment cards will be accepted. Will the city clerk please call the roll and make announcements?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the October 7th, 2019 regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to make a public comment, you're required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. Your comment card must be presented to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. All speakers must please identify yourself by name, address, and organization before beginning your comment. If you're representing an organization, an affidavit is required stating you have the authority to speak on behalf of that organization. Please review tonight's agenda, and if you would like to make a comment, please bring your comment card to me now. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited. Please refrain from making applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Peyton Jameson.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Coons.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Bentley.
Here.
Councilmember Carol Cookerly.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
For the record, Councilmember Rick Morick is absent. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the God who stands, one nation, and God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And want to thank you for being here and welcome here tonight, and a special warm welcome to the Hopewell Mustangs. Thank you guys for being here. So if you could please sound the next item, Stacy.
Next item is approval of a meeting agenda.
Okay, I would like to add an executive session to discuss land acquisition. Anything else? Not all open up for a motion?
May I make a motion that we approve the meeting agenda with the addition of an executive session to discuss land acquisition?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Coons, and I believe Councilmember Longoria seconded that for approval. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, Stacy, do we have any general public comment?
I do not have any general public comment.
Okay. All right. Then let's move on to the consent agenda. If you would please read those items.
Okay. The first item under consent is approval of a task order between the City of Milton and BM&amp;KAPC to provide construction inspection services for land development activities. This is for a part-time land development inspector, agenda item number 19-219. Our second and final consent agenda item is approval of subdivision plots. The name of the development is The Mylum Group LLC for land lots 481, 527, and 528, located at 1530 Densmore and 15295 Freemanville. This is for a minor plot to reconfigure two existing lots on a total of 2.54 acres for a density of .78 lots per acre. Agenda item number 19-220.
Okay, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley, a second from Councilmember Cookerly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, let's move on to our reports and presentations, and Stacy, if you'll please call the first item.
First item is the proclamation recognizing Hopewell Mustangs All-Star Baseball 2018 Six U and 2019 Seven U Team Day, presented by Councilmember Joe Longoria.
All right. If you're a member of the Hopewell Mustangs, boys, please stand up. And I think there were some ball girls in the audience as well. Is that true? No? Maybe there's not? Okay. All right. Listen, guys, this is what I want to tell you. This is all about a proclamation for something that you guys did, something that you guys accomplished. I understand that you've been playing baseball most of your lives. And that you had the opportunity to play together for both the state championship as well as the world championship in Mississippi, I believe it was. So whenever a team gets together, puts that kind of effort, energy, and dedication into something, and achieves that, we want to be able to recognize you. All right? Because we want to make sure you understand what you did was that special. All right? So I'm going to read this. I want you guys to listen, and then after I've read it, everybody's going to clap a little bit, and then we're going to walk down, we're going to take some pictures, and I'm going to give you guys a copy of the proclamation that I'm reading right now. Okay? All right. Proclamation for the Hopewell Mustang All-Star Baseball 2018 Six U and 2019 Seven U Team Day. Whereas, baseball is a sport that requires skillful hand-eye coordination, mental awareness, and physical endurance. And whereas, the Hopewell Youth Association has provided youth baseball programming at Bell Memorial Park since 1986. And whereas, every year, the Hopewell Youth Association creates summer All-Star teams for multiple age groups of youth players, and in 2017, they created the first-ever Five U Hopewell Mustangs All-Star team. And whereas, in 2018, the now-one-year-older Six U Hopewell Mustangs won four tournaments leading up to their very first Dizzy Dean League State Tournament Championship, and it was the first for a Hopewell All-Star team, and finished second in the Dizzy Dean World Series, compiling a record of 31 wins and three losses. And whereas, in 2019, the now-again-one-year-older Seven U Hopewell Mustangs won three tournaments, including their second Dizzy Dean State Championship, leading up to their very first Dizzy Dean World Series Tournament Championship, and the first for a Hopewell All-Star team, compiling a record of 26 wins and four losses. Whereas, the 2018 Six U and 2019 Seven U Hopewell Mustangs have combined a combined two-year record of 57 wins, seven losses, and they've never lost two consecutive games. And whereas, the players on the 2018 Six U and the 2019 Seven U Hopewell Mustangs are champions, not only on the field, but also in the classroom, in community, and in life, where we are proud, and we are proud that this great team is located in Milton, Georgia. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the city of Milton, hereby dictate and proclaim Monday, October 7th, as Hopewell Mustangs All-Star Baseball 2018 Six U and 2019 Seven U Team Day, in the city of Milton, Georgia, given under our hand and seal of the city of Milton, Georgia, on the 7th day of October, 2019. Congratulations, guys. You guys come join us up here.
And parents, we will share the high res.
You guys all look nice tonight, too, with your ties on, dressed up.
Awesome.
So, Council, if you'll get on the back, being the taller ones of the group, against the wall.
Yep. And the gentleman, I'm going to have you come in, and you're going to line up in front of them, just like a little horseshoe right here. You can place, I'll move you around a little bit.
Don't be scared. You can bounce up a little bit.
Council, if you will, move a half a step this way. I'm going to touch you. You're going to come on. Take about a half a step back, closer to Council. There you go. They won't bite you off. Okay, back just a little bit. You two, come right here. I'm going to teach you a trick. You're going to stand in between the person behind you, their shoulders. Okay, so I'm going to touch you right now. I'm going to put you right here. We're going to swap with you. Yep, we're going to achieve in the back row right here. There we go. Perfect, perfect. We're going to use your right ears. You're going to come up a little bit, a few minutes. There you go, gentlemen. You're going to sit right there. Okay, come right here for me. Yep, there you go. Oh, there you go. And spread just a little bit for me. Spread out. There we go. Not too far.
Want to make your last one challenging?
Right here. Right here. Perfect. Okay, now look at your blue folders. Put your gold seal on the bottom for me. I want you, you know how to use yours? I want you just to hold it right here. Lock your handsome face, just hold it right here. There you go. All right, let me look at you real quick. Okay, everybody, move just a little bit this way. Okay? Good, good, good. Okay. You're good, right there. Front row, spread a little bit, Matt.
Go to the right.
Yeah, there we go. Perfect. Oh, nope. Now you come right back. There you go. Councilman Coons is going to help you. Follow his lead right there. There you go. Perfect, perfect. Yep, just over a little bit for me. You got you, yep. You're perfect, right there. Okay, everybody, look at me real quickly. All right, got a good shot. Hang tight. We're looking right here, not at your parents. One, two, three. Let's do it again. Smile. One, two, three. If you will, right here, put your blue folders down, just a little bit. Perfect. Let's do it one more time. One more time. Great. Everybody's so patient. Thank you. One, looking at me. All right, we're ready? Looking right here. One, two, three. Ready? One, two, three. Smile. Stay right where you are. Okay, good. Everyone's eyes are open. We're good. Yay! Thank you.
Did we just do?
I appreciate that.
We kept my warm. We're all really proud of you guys, though. Good luck. Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, you don't want to listen to this, do you? Come on!
Civic Spanish words, yeah.
Stacy, if you would please read the, sound the next proclamation item. Wait a second.
They did so good, though. The picture.
And it's happy energy.
Exactly.
Sorry to be here.
Okay, so our next item is swearing in of firefighters David Jones and Michael Dalton, Chief Robert Egger.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to introduce the Fire Rescue Department's two newest firefighters, Michael Dalton and David Jones. Michael is a certified firefighter EMT. He put himself through the fire academy and his EMT training on his own, and this is his first fire department job. David is a certified firefighter EMT. He comes to us from Gilner County Fire Rescue, where he spent nearly 11 years. He holds many certifications, which include Swiftwater Rescue, Fire Investigator, and a member of the Georgia Search and Rescue Team. So I'd ask Michael and David if they'd please come up, and Mayor, if you would be so kind as to give them the oath of office.
You guys will raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
I'm David Jones.
Swear or affirm.
Swear or affirm.
That I'm qualified to hold the position of firefighter.
I'm qualified to hold the position of firefighter.
To which I am appointed.
To which I am appointed.
And for so long as I employed with the city of Milton.
So long as I'm employed by the city of Milton.
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the state of Georgia.
Constitution of the state of Georgia.
And I will faithfully perform.
Faithfully perform.
And discharge the duties of my position.
Discharge the duties of my position.
Conscientiously and without malice or partiality.
Conscientiously without malice or partiality.
Partiality. To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I further swear and affirm.
Further swear and affirm.
To obey.
To obey.
To adhere to.
To adhere to.
To uphold and to enforce.
To uphold and to enforce.
The laws of the United States of America.
Laws of the United States of America.
The state of Georgia.
The state of Georgia.
And the city of Milton at all times.
The city of Milton at all times.
I further swear or affirm.
Further swear or affirm.
That I will bear true faith.
I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the city of Milton.
Allegiance to the city of Milton.
And the officers appointed over me.
The officers appointed over me.
According to the law.
According to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, thank you, Mike. Thank you, David. And as always, Chief, just want to thank these two and everybody else in uniform for keeping us safe and getting out there every day for us. I owe you all a deep debt of gratitude, so.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Chief, do you want to get some pictures or not?
Yes. Yes. I was distracted by a P. Let's get one with counsel, our five first, and then I'm going to substitute the family in. Stay right where you are. Perfect. Okay, you're going to step all the way back with counsel to the wall? Perfect. All the way back.
Yes, we're going to get just these first, and then we'll. Go get them in order, please, one.
That's right, the family, they're really important, that's right. Okay, we're all going to look right here. Okay? All right, let's look right here. One, two, three. Smile. Let's do that again. One, two, three. Whose family wants to go first?
Should we get the chief in that one, too?
Oh, was he in? Oh, chief. Oh, yes. I'm sorry. You're supposed to be in there, too. Wait a minute. So everyone, if you would, take a half a step this way to sort of even out the... Thank you, Stacy. I'm looking through a small lens, sorry. There we are, tight down there. Perfect. All right, let's look here. Let's do that again. One, two, three. Let's do that again. One, two, three. Smile. So there we are. One more. All right. One, two, three. Great, we're good. Okay. Family, who wants to go first? All right, you have, if you'll bring your family up. Counsel, you don't, you don't want to stay with? Yes. Yes, if you don't mind, yes, sorry. I don't, I'm not on top of my game tonight, clearly. There you go, there you go. We'll get family together. There you go. Perfect, perfect. Perfect. Great. All right, we're looking right here. And one, two, three. Smile. Let's do that again. One, two, three. Excellent. Good job. Next?
If everyone will take just a half a step this way for me.
Perfect. All right. Good right here. All right, ladies, we're looking right here at me. One, two, three. Smile. Let's do it again. One, two, three. Stay right where you are, please. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I want to also, not only thank David and Michael for serving the city, but also your family, too. Thank you so much.
Okay. It's a consideration of an ordinance amendment to Chapter 48, Article 7, Division 3, Section 48-585, for prohibitions and uses in the public right of way to address fixed objects in the right-of-way. Agenda item number 19-221.
May I make a motion that we approve the first presentation item as read?
Second.
I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Coons, second from Councilmember Bentley. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. So tonight, we have no items under a public hearing or zoning agenda.
And I will faithfully perform.
Faithfully perform.
And discharge the duties of my position.
Discharge the duties of my position.
Conscientiously and without malice or partiality.
Conscientiously without malice or partiality.
For the best of my ability.
For the best of my ability.
I further swear and affirm.
Further swear and affirm.
To obey.
To obey.
To adhere to.
To adhere to.
To uphold and to enforce.
To uphold and to enforce.
The laws of the United States of America.
Laws of the United States of America.
The State of Georgia.
The State of Georgia.
And the City of Milton at all times.
The City of Milton at all times.
I further swear or affirm.
Further swear or affirm.
That I will bear true faith.
I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the City of Milton.
Allegiance to the City of Milton.
And the officers appointed over me.
The officers appointed over me.
According to the law.
According to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, David. And, uh, as always, Chief, just, uh, want to thank, uh, these two and everybody else in uniform for, uh, keeping us safe and, uh, getting out there every day for, for us. I owe you, owe you all a deep debt of gratitude, so.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Chief, do you want to get some pictures or not?
Yes. Yes. I was distracted by a P. Let's get, um, one with counsel and firefights first, and then I'm going to substitute family in. Stay right where you are.
All right, that's perfect. Okay, you're going to step all the way back with counsel to the wall? Perfect, all the way back.
Yeah, yes, we're going to get just these first, and then we'll. That's right, the family, they're really important, that's right.
Okay, we're all going to look right here. Okay. All right, let's look right here, one, two, three, smile. Let's do that again, one, two, three. Uh, whose family wants to go first?
Should we get the chief in that one too?
Oh, was he in my, oh, chief, oh, yes, I'm sorry. You're supposed to be in there too. Wait a minute. So everyone, if you would, take a half a step this way to sort of even out the, thank you, Stacy. I, I'm looking through a small lens, sorry. There we are, tight down there, perfect. All right, let's look here, let's do that again, one, two, three. Let's do that again, one, two, three, smile. So there we are. One more. All right, one, two, three. Great, we're good, okay. Family, who wants to go first? All right, you have, if you'll bring your family up. Counsel, you don't, you don't want to stay with? Yes, yes, if you don't mind, yes, sorry. I don't, I, I'm, I'm not, uh, on top of my game tonight, clearly. There you go, there you go. We'll get family together, there you go, perfect, perfect. Perfect, great. All right, we're looking right here, and one, two, three, smile. Let's do that again, one, two, three. Excellent, good job. Next.
If everyone will take just a half a step this way, woman, perfect, perfect.
All right, good right here. All right, ladies, we're looking right here at me, one, two, three, smile. Let's do it again, one, two, three. Stay right where you are, please. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I want to also, uh, not only thank David and Michael for, for, uh, serving the city and also your family too, so thank you so much. Okay, Stacy, if you could please, first presentation item.
Okay. Is a consideration of an ordinance amendment to Chapter 48, Article 7, Division 3, Section 48 dash 585, for prohibitions and uses in the public right of way to address fixed objects in the right of way, Agenda Item Number 19-21.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the first presentation item as read.
Second.
I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Coontz, second from Councilmember Bentley. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. So tonight, we have no items under a public hearing or zoning agendas, so we're going to move on to unfinished business. Stacy, if you please call the item.
Consideration of an ordinance to update the City of Milton's Chapter 56, Article 5, which is regulations relating to parking and for related purposes, Agenda Item Number 19 dash 215. The first presentation was at September 23rd, 2019 City Council Meeting, Chief Rich Austin.
Greetings, Mayor, members of council. Uh, this ordinance would establish a parking ordinance within the city. Uh, currently, our officers only have the option of writing state charges for routine parking violations. Uh, the fines for these, uh, the state charges are typically right at $178, and this is mandated by a state court. Uh, if the council is inclined to enact this ordinance, officers would have the option to charge violations on a city citation and would allow the city court, in conjunction with the judge, to set a more reasonable fine schedule. Uh, we envision most fines will be approximately $25 to $50, uh, at that point. Uh, this is more in line with our neighboring jurisdictions, and we feel that this change, um, we could still have the positive impact on parking enforcement while being more fair to our citizens. Uh, and interestingly, this, uh, uh, ordinance would also allow our public safety ambassadors to write, uh, traffic citations on occasion.
Okay, any questions?
Okay, so this is citywide for all parking violations?
Correct.
Okay, great, I, I did get a comment, um, about the extreme, um, amount from someone on Wood Road, and I will say that i- it is a little bit ambiguous because even when I go, I, I'm real unsure about where the parallel parking is allowed and not allowed, and I know we don't want to litter that area with signs, but maybe we can do an outreach, um, being there in the morning with this, the public safety ambassadors, just to let people know what areas might not, you know, where they shouldn't park, because it's different now, so thank you for that change, I totally support it.
Okay, anybody else? All right, I'll, uh, open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 19 dash, what, 215.
Second. Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Jameson for approval, or with a second from Councilmember Cookerly, I believe. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, Stacy, if you please sound the next item.
Next item is consideration of an ordinance of the City of Milton to revise and update Chapter 4, Section 4 dash 235, 5A3, as it relates to the crimes preventing the possession of a pouring permit, Agenda Item Number 19-216. First presentation was at the September 23rd, 2019 City Council Meeting, Chief Rich Austin.
Uh, Mayor, members of council, this minor ordinance modification would change one of the violations that prohibits folks from obtaining, uh, possessing an alcohol pouring permit. Uh, this would just change from, uh, the, uh, any illegal possession of controlled substance as a disqualifier to felony possession of a controlled substance as the disqualifier. Uh, we just felt like that was a bit more reasonable, uh, for folks that were trying to obtain a permit.
Okay, any questions from Chief on that? Okay, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 19 dash 216.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley, with a second from Councilmember Cookerly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. So we'll move on to new business. Stacy, if you'll please sound the item.
It's consideration of a land acquisition agreement for purchase of realty between the City of Milton and United Athletics Incorporated for Fulton Count, for Fulton Tax Parcel It's 170 Cox Road, for 8.128 acres with a purchase price of $1,500,000. Agenda Item Number 19-222, Mr. Jim Craig.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, what you have before you is the option for the city to, uh, place a contract on this property. Uh, the property currently, uh, has always been used as active field space. It has had lights on it for many, many years. Uh, it was renovated two years ago with two large grass fields, uh, that are in beautiful condition for playing soccer or lacrosse. Um, and there's also a half-size artificial turf field. This is an area that has very few neighbors around it. On one side, there is a, uh, cemetery, on the other side, there's a small school, private school. Uh, it has always existed as a park, as an active playspace park, and in accordance with the 2027 master plan, it specifically encouraged us to seek opportunities such as this. The plan also indicates that as of 2017, we were short two multipurpose fields, and we will need two more by 2027. I thank you for your consideration of this contract, and I am prepared to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Any questions for Jim on this? I, I just want to make a statement that, you know, this to me is a, uh, kind of a win-win, it's a, a piece of property that's for sale, but also, um, you know, already has a lot of improvements that, uh, we definitely have a, a need for in City of Milton, so, uh, Mayor.
Yeah, um, I agree, I think this is definitely something that we've, are very fortunate it kind of fell in our lap this way, obviously, we get a lot of, um, we relieve, relieve some of the pressure of our sports facilities without having to cut any, cut down any existing trees, so I think that's a good thing. Um, a couple of questions I had from people in the community, um, once we opened, once we make, we make this purchase, what would be the cost to run it? And I didn't have an answer for that. Do you have an idea?
I don't have an answer for it, but that will be part of the due diligence that we would have to do on this sort of.
Right, so we would do that, and of course, you said the condition of the fields are good right now, no?
They are in excellent condition right now.
Excellent condition right now, good.
And, and Mr. Coontz, if I may add, I have already to, spoken with the contractor who put in the artificial turf field.
Mm-hmm.
It is the same contractor who put in the artificial turf fields at Bell Memorial Park, and he has assured me that the eight-year warranty on the artificial turf field is transferable to the city, if we take ownership.
And when is that eight years over?
I can't hear you, sir.
When is that eight years over?
Uh, well, it started two years ago, so.
Two years ago, so we have six more years in that warranty then, okay. Um, and, and the sports specifically that are benefiting, or soccer and lacrosse, um, I forgot, we don't have a baseball on that, do we?
Uh, well, we don't have a soccer program at this time, but the lacrosse is, uh, definitely would benefit from that. Uh, and, uh, right now, the fields are not can, set up to be useful for baseball.
Gotcha, okay, just, just relaying the information. Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? Laura?
I have a question for, just, where, where are the funds coming from to pay for this? Mr. Krokoff?
I bel, I believe these came from the final 2019, um, budget amendments into the operating, the operating transfer out to the Pago.
So we're using the Pago funds?
That is correct.
So I just want to, um, you know, those of us that voted for that, um, mill to be at the historically set rate, we knew that this day was coming, and I appreciate the support on it, to be able to have this flexibility to buy this property. We knew we were short these fields all along, and, um, we had to make a tough decision when that time came to, um, stay at the capped mill, and it's for this type of, um, purchase that we planned for. And, um, you know, we were in a, uh, in a relationship with Alpharetta, with the memorandum of understanding that was not, no longer serving our needs, and, um, I just appreciate the, the vision and the foresight of those council members that voted to be able to have this flexibility and do this for, um, our active parks program.
Okay, anything, anybody else?
I, I would just want to, since I went through my first budget opportunity this time around, I, um, I appreciate the Pago system and how unique Milton is, and I appreciate your comments because it enabled us to slide right into this opportunity and not put any other kind of debt on our citizens, so I think this is a classic example of what that little tiny increase did for everybody. Thank you, Jim, good work.
It takes a large group of us to make this happen. I'm just the person standing up here.
Well, thank you for being up there.
Big team. Okay, anything else? I'll open up for motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 19 dash 222.
Second. Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley, with a second from Councilmember Coontz. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to, uh, staff reports and Public Works.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager. Uh, brief report, just to give you a little background of what happened in the month of September. We are continuing to do our stormwater inspections. Uh, we're about 60% completed of the thousand structures we have to inspect. We've essentially completed inspecting our outfalls and our ponds. Um, couple of projects that you probably are already aware of, we are now under construction, repair of the sidewalks and ramps in the Belt Air, Bethany, and Brookshade side divisions. Um, DAF is our contractor for that project. We are currently bidding a drainage improvement project at Batesville and Taylor Road intersections. We've had ponding water there, and we've got, uh, plans that are on the street to construct an improvement, drainage improvement project there. Um, we hope to occupy, well, actually, we're expecting to occupy our Public Works facility sometime this week, so, um, that's good news to us because we've, uh, we definitely need the room for that. Uh, on the maintenance side, we had 97 work orders for September, and just a brief summary of those 97 work orders, 28 were sign issues, uh, 18 potholes, edge of pavement problems. Um, I know you always like to hear about dead animals, we had 17 dead animals in the month of September, um, and 10 stormwater issues and a couple other minor, uh, issues. Uh, we issued 16 right-of-way encroachment permits, of those 16, two of those were, were driveways. So, uh, any questions or comments, I'd be glad to address those.
Any questions for, we're letting you off easy, you know, you get that 90-day, you get that 90-day honeymoon.
I'm ready. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Courtney, Community Outreach.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mine is not as brief, I'm sorry. I don't talk to y'all as often, though. Um, thank you to everybody who came to Crab Apple Fest. Um, we had, if you weren't there, we had beautiful weather, um, the first real day of fall, um, was with us for, for the day. We had record crowds, happy vendors and attendees, um, and a lot of people have thanked me for that, um, I can't take credit for the weather, um, and I don't really like to take credit even for the festival. Um, it's easy to take credit for that, but as a leader, I understand that gratitude is a foundation for any great team, um, and any great event, um, and it lets others know that they matter. I could easily, um, take that credit, but, and I could truly stand here and thank people until you all cut the mic, um, or play music, like they do at the Oscars, um, but, um, I won't do that to anybody, um, but I do need to thank some people publicly. Um, our Milton staff from Public Works, um, does a fantastic job, um, police and fire, make sure that everybody is kept safe at the event with the detour, um, and all the public safety that, for all those people, um, thousands and thousands of people there, and it takes, um, all of them to keep that event safe. Mark Arrington is a Milton citizen, um, who without, without fail, without reminders, and without any pay, um, handles all of the recycling for all of our Milton events. Volunteers, uh, from the National Charity League, um, show up and help, help take care of vendors, um, and help at our welcome tent. Our two top sponsors are Crab Apple Market and Lincoln, and then our community partners, Crab Apple Community Association, Crab Apple First Baptist Church, Milton High School, Crab Apple Community Elementary School, Northwestern High School, um, Crab Apple Family Dentistry, um, let us use their parking, which is a big, big deal, um, if you know. Um, and finally, my own team, communications and engagement, including Jen Hartwig, Anita Juipan, and Shannon Ferguson, who are at the event from beginning to end, as they always are, doing whatever tasks need to be done. Um, Shannon, like so many other employees and citizens, um, here, we will miss you greatly, thank you very much. Um, we're still compiling full details about the festival, um, we'll have a debrief with Crab Apple Community Association, staff, public safety, and the contractors we work with, um, to work out what worked well and what we need to, to make it a even, even better festival, um, to make it the best festival in the area. Um, and that's it about Crab Apple Fest, but that, that took over, um, a lot of time for everybody, for a lot of people, so I wanted to knock it out. But since May, um, over the summer, we had a summer intern, Audrey Shannon, a lot of you met her and already know her, she is fantastic. She worked with each city department to develop a comprehensive internship program, um, the city's first. Um, she included the steps for implementation, measures for success, um, she presented that to city management, um, and the program was approv, approved for fiscal year 2020, um, and recruitment for volunteers will begin, um, for, for interns will begin in January 2020. Um, she's back at school in Mount Holyoke, she let me follow her on Instagram, so she's doing well. Um, but that's what we did this summer. Um, we also hired one of two part-time special events coordinators, one of those is Anita Juipan. Um, she started August 19th, she's a UGA graduate, um, with tons of event experience. Um, her first, uh, Milton event was Crab Apple Fest, and she had a great time. Um, I was heartened that she had a list of things for improvement at the end of the festival, um, and she also has volunteer experience with Crab Apple Community Association. We worked on the budget, and we'll be hiring another part-time special events coordinator, um, very soon. We're also working on the 2020 events calendar, um, and hopefully adding some new events as we get that second part-time, uh, special events coordinator hired, um, working with them. Our upcoming Community Outreach, uh, with Better Together, we have Adopta Road, um, on October 26th, um, and are working to, uh, expand their outreach in the community as well. The Village Volunteers, um, have added music therapy, um, today, I think they took a trip to the Atlanta Zoo, they're working on a new brochure, and their volunteer leader, Diane Stewart, and her volunteers and caregivers, um, continue to find innovative and caring ways, um, to involve young adults with special needs in the community. Their group is ever-growing, um, and finding new ways to do that. In November, um, upcoming, we're hosting Greater North Fulton Chamber of Commerce Emerging Leaders Program, that's their teen leadership group, um, we'll have 38, uh, seniors from North Fulton High Schools, um, here at City Hall for Government Day. Um, I think they will be reaching out to you all, Council, um, for, to, to maybe come speak to that group. Um, we'll be hosting them here, um, and then we'll be hosting, uh, Leadership North Fulton's Economic Development Day, also here at City Hall, and then our, our own Citizens Government Academy, fourth cohort begins in January, so we'll be recruiting for that. Um, the Milton Equestrian Committee is working with Public Works on Birmingham Park Trail improvements, um, and then they're also working on, um, different event ideas for educating, uh, citizens about, um, horses and equestrians. Upcoming events are Carving and Crab Apple on October 20th at Bravo Pavilion, Christmas in Crab Apple on November 30th at Bravo Pavilion, and Pancake Breakfast with Santa, yes, uh, December 7th at Fire Station 43. We continue to find ways to make, um, to ensure that Milton is a welcoming, inclusive place where residents are engaged. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ken, point of order, we've got our executive session next, but can I switch council reports and present our council reports in front of executive session?
Uh, you, in fact, you should do that, yes.
Okay, does, do I need to do any action, or you? All right, does anybody on council have anything they want to report on?
No.
I'd like to ask Shannon to step forward, and I want to say a couple words. It's, uh, bittersweet that, uh, we wish Shannon farewell, I think Wednesday's your last day here.
Wednesday, that's right, that's right.
Taking on a new opportunity, but just want to thank you from, from my position and the council for, uh, as well as all of our citizens and rest of our staff, thank you for everything you've done for the City of Milton, we'll miss you, but, uh, good luck moving forward.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thanks.
I felt a need to write down and normally speak from the cuff, but, um, a bit emotional, um, it's a great team, and just want to, uh, share some thoughts specifically with council. Um, I certainly appreciate the opportunity to address you all one last time. Um, it's been an absolute pleasure, um, to serve such an engaged community. Um, while I had lots of experience in state government and had served local governments, um, in my former job at UGA, I had never actually provided, um, local government services, so I, I knew very little in the way of Public Works, Community Development.
knew very little in the way of Public Works, community development, planning and zoning, law enforcement, or the fire service. Lucky for me, I was fortunate enough to find myself among some of the most dedicated public servants that I've ever had the pleasure of working with. They tolerated my incessant questions. They were always patient with me, and they never, not even once, made me feel stupid for whatever dumb question I might have just asked them. I am forever grateful to my fellow department heads and their staff for all that they've taught me about local government. I also want to express my thanks to council. You two made my job easy as the communications director, because while you may not all agree on a particular policy or a decision, you're always thoughtful in your analysis, your love for Milton is unwavering, and your decisions are informed and always laser-focused on the greater good, and that's what matters. I will leave you with one final challenge. Annually, I have the honor of participating in the local government MPA panel at UGA, and the city manager of an unnamed metropolitan suburb offered some students words of wisdom. He says, "It's easy to get caught up in addressing the 2% that are unhappy for whatever reason, but when we do, we're forgetting the 98% that are satisfied and pleased with their community, and that's because of you and because of staff." And so while you have to be responsive, he says, "You also have to remember that all the work that you did to deliver that satisfaction to the 98% who may not be as vocal in that moment." So thank you all for your support over these last three years. I wish you continued success, and I can't wait to see what you all accomplish in the next decade, and I'm sure that I will see some of you or others at GMA. But thank you so much for the opportunity to serve Milton.
Thank you, Ken. Okay, next is, we added an executive session to discuss land acquisition. If I can have a motion and a second.
Move to adjourned executive session. Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Longoria, a second by Councilmember Jameson.
Land acquisition.
For land acquisition, yes.
I'm sorry.
Oh, you didn't hear me say that?
I'm sure you did.
Okay, all right, just checking.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Says it right there on the agenda.
I think I'll have a mint.
Go ahead, you can have all you want.
Lars.
All right.
What am I supposed to do?
Move to reconvene.
Who said that?
Rob.
All right. Do I have a motion to reconvene?
Don't move.
Motion to second to reconvene, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. And that'll conclude our meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second.
I have a motion to second to adjourn, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous also.
See you.
See you.
See you.